I am Zan Buffington, I'm the organizing organizer for the Frogtown Neighborhood Association. And we're one of a bunch of organizations that are putting this event together along with the League of Women Voters. So this real victory is off the St. Paul Fair Lending Coalition, which is made up of Frogtown Neighborhood Association, Jewish Community Actions, Southern University Planning Council. We also are being sponsored by Horace Anthony Neighborhood Development Corporation, obviously the League of Women Voters, LIND, and the Wiley Foundation, specifically the St. Paul Promise Neighborhoods. So all of these groups coming together to make this happen tonight. I want to say thank you to all of them. So in that, I'm going to introduce Dakota from Fair Vote to talk to people really about first choice voting.
And I will, great. Yeah, name's Dakota, I'm with Fair Vote Minnesota, everyone always thinks I'm saying "Fair Vote." Yeah, but we're here tonight, we're working in partnership with Ramsey County Elections this cycle to make sure that everybody in St. Paul, specifically here in the ward, are ready to rank their vote on November 5th. And I did say "rank," here for our local elections for mayor and city council, we actually get to go in and not just vote for a single candidate, but rank our candidates in order of preference. This is a change that we had back in 2009, it was a change on the ballot up for voter consideration, and in St. Paul, we decided, yeah, let's give this a try, we think it's going to make our vote more powerful. And in 2011, we used the system for the first time, but now in 2013, eyes are really all on us here in Ward 1, because we are the only folks that have a very, very competitive city council race. And from a candidate that they'll be hearing from, you'll see why it's so competitive. We have seven amazing folks on the ballot that all want your first choice ranked. And ranked voting isn't as easy as it sounds, you get to rank the candidates in order of preference. We have up to six rankings, and there are seven candidates, so you can really weigh in on nearly everybody on your ballot, which is great. And you'll see in front of you a little version of what just three looks like, and ours goes all the way to six. And so what's really great about this as well is, usually we have a turnout of primary election in August, almost no one ever went to those local primary elections, and yet they took the candidates and brought it down to two or three choices. So now we still have all the choices on the ballot, everybody's still out there knocking on your door, calling your phone number, and working to get your first, second, third votes, which is wonderful. And ultimately, the reason it's going to be so important that we do rank, and not just say what our first choice is, but think about and rank our second, and third, and so on, is that one of these candidates needs to get over 50% of the vote to win, a real majority, so at least 50% plus a vote. We know with this many candidates on the ballot, we're probably not going to get there when we count up everyone's first choice votes. So in that case, the lowest vote getter is going to be eliminated. And if that candidate was your top choice, your vote's going to move over to your second choice, and they're going to recount all the ballots. So that's really important, because it's never going to hurt your first choice if you rank, and when you rank, I hope. So they're going to count up all the ballots once again, check for majority, and that process can keep continuing for as many rounds as needed, until we get someone that all of us in the ward can agree should be our next representative to the city council and to the city of St. Paul. So it's a really, really easy system, but it's a really powerful tool, it's more empowering and more choice for us in the ward. And so I really, you know, above and beyond thinking about that, and as the candidates are here, don't just think about your first choice, think about who you are going to rank second, who you're going to rank third, and where all these candidates line up in your mind. Before you leave today, make sure that you pledge to rank that vote on November 5th. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you, everybody. Next, I'd like to introduce, we've got the candidates coming in, and I'm going to introduce Vicki G. Trepp, who will be our moderator for this evening to the League of Women Voters. And that's Vicki coming in at the end.
My name is Vicki G. Trepp. As a member of the League of Women Voters, I am today's moderator, and to be fair, you should know I'm not a constituent of Ward 1, but rather Ward 2. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization of women and men organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens' participation in government. While the League of Women Voters study and take stand on issues, it does not endorse or support any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. On the dinner with the election ballot Tuesday, November 5th, for City Council Ward 1 are candidates Paul Tomcrin, Johnny Howard, Kazua Kamkau, Debbie Montgomery, Noel Nix, Dai Kao, and Mark Warding. Thank you for participating in today's forum, both in the audience as well as our candidates. I will provide an overview of the procedures. The candidates have already randomly determined the order in which they would speak. I will ask each of you to hold your cards until the forum is concluded. We will have a two-minute opening statement from each candidate. We have a timekeeper seated in the front row. She will indicate, I'm going to show them please, by holding up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds left, and another, a red one, when time is up. You'll be allowed to end your sentence, and I'll ask you to respect the timeline. Following those statements, there will be a question period. Volunteers have passed out a paper and pencil for you to write your questions. Pass your questions to the end of the aisle, a volunteer will collect these questions throughout the forum and bring them to me at the podium. If a question is similar or a repeat of another question, they may be combined to cover as many topics as possible. If you direct your question to a particular candidate, all candidates will have a chance to respond. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of personal nature will not be permitted, and all cards become the property of the League of Women Voters. Candidates will have one minute to reply to each question. There will also be a two-minute closing stage. So, the opening statement by random selection will begin Kazua Kamkau.
Nia Jong, hola. I'm so excited to see you tonight. Thank you very much for coming out, and I know we're just talking to folks in the middle of the listening booth, you're a hardcore supporter, so thank you for coming out to listen. My name is Kazua Kamkau. I have lived in Ward 1 for 30 years. I started, I lived here 30 years ago, my parents were visiting in Frogtown. And I came to this area because my parents were not even for work, like, but I've come to love this area and appreciate this area. Since then, I have launched school, and I have four children, and I have been in the school, I was a dancer, my children, all four of my children have gone to Jackson. Now I have eight, not three members, but also eight other children. I worked in Africa in this area for years, and recently, in 2003, my parents recently captured my land, since I was really trying to tear something up, and I'm excited to say, on this school board, I had the opportunity to serve as the vice chair, and I was there because of the, with that, I had the opportunity to add a long-term office to raise the budget, and then also, also with that, 7,000. We have over my first running, we had over 40,000 tickets by the time I left, we had about 38,000 tickets. And I share this with you, because as a former student in St. Paul's school, when I was in school, 25% of students were, today, over 75% are students. I think it's important to have your next city member to be someone who understands, who understands not only voters who are going to help to come and serve on, as city council members, the city council members have got to do things to address, and believe that we should, that it's not without the opportunity to have, to have, to help, to save, to all the families. Specifically, I want to make everyone's day after.
Thank you, Debbie Montgomery.
Can I, it's really difficult to hear back here, so if we could ask the candidates, please, stand up.
Can they use the microphone?
And stand up.
Well, whatever, but talk, stand up, or talk loudly, or something.
Stand up, stand up. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Debbie Montgomery, and I'm a resident of Ward 1, born and raised here, been here all my life, with the school here, St. Paul Central, I'm Marshall, and JJ Hill. It's been my honor to work with the community groups, I've been very active in the community, working on several other boards, I was in, in the 60s, I was on Model Cities District Council, which was now the Southern Department of Planning Council. I have a master's degree in urban planning, urban planning, a master's in police administration. It's been, I've worked for the city for 44 years, I started off in Park to Red, went in as city planning, budget analyst, transit aides coordinator, and then got hired as the first female police officer on the St. Paul Police Department. I got elected to the St. Paul City Council in 2003, and served for four years representing this board. I have been involved with numerous district councils and community groups, president of YWCA in St. Paul, is on the St. Paul Order meeting, is on the NAACP Board of Directors, and I've worked with several of the immigrant groups through some of their challenges and issues. It's been my honor to work on the light rail program project that came through this board, we were able to give three additional stops, so that we can ensure that we could get economic engines into our ward going north and south. So those, those are issues that I have worked on. I look forward to the opportunity to serve again, and I hope for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel Nix.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight, at a very important moment, for a very important conversation about the future of our community. My name is Noel Nix, and I've had the pleasure of serving as your legislative aide in the Ward 1 office over the past two years. And in that capacity, I've had an opportunity to learn about the diversity and the challenges and the issues that are facing each neighborhood that makes up Ward 1. And I'm running to be your next city council member, because I don't want to lose any momentum in taking advantage of the opportunities and taking, taking on the challenges that face our community. This is a critical moment for the ward and for the city. The decisions that we make over the next few years are really going to determine what our neighborhoods look like for the next generation. And we can't afford to take a step back, or to lose momentum, in tackling those challenges and seizing those opportunities that are going to help us shape the future that we want for our community. Not too long ago, I worked as an apartment manager on Grand Avenue. That was a job that I really loved, and I really enjoyed, because it gave me an opportunity to help people connect with a home and a neighborhood that I knew that they would love. And when the foreclosure crisis hit, that changed. I found myself in the position of having to say no to families who had lost their houses to foreclosure, and were simply looking for a place to rent. And so I quit that job, and I dedicated my life and my career to helping people build economic opportunity in theirs. And that's the work that we're going to do together, if you will let me to the St. Paul City Council. We're going to work together to ensure that everyone in our ward has access to a decent home, a living wage, and a neighborhood that they're proud to call home. We're going to make sure that our neighborhoods are safer, stronger, and that our small business community is thriving, so that we can sit together at Golden Time, or at Nina's, or at the Daily Diner, years from now, and be proud of the work that we did together. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Ai, how?
I thought that we were, when we say now, we advantage, because I'm the shortest candidate in the room. My name is Dai Kao. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I've been endorsed by the firefighter, Richard Kalbom, SGIU, Take Action Minnesota, operating engineer Local 49. And they endorsed me, because they also believe, as I believe, in that we live in the richest country in the world, yet we have 18% of African-American along Central Border that are unemployed, that is unacceptable, we have a huge education gap, we have our homes that are being foreclosed. Ward 1's residents are some of the most resilient, some of the most creative, talented, hardest working people I've met, door knocking. All we need are the good job, all we need are the good school, all we need are the prosperity and opportunity worthy of us people, and we don't have that right now. And that's why I'm running for city council. I was, I came to the United States in 1983 as a political refugee, and how I developed my racial and social justice value is in the refugee camp. I know what it's like to be in poverty, I remember walking at the market, hoping that somebody would throw something away so that I could have, you know. I remember growing up in a domestic violence home, where I had to stand up for my mom, and it was this experience as a six-year-old that has helped me connect to the community, the disabled, the elders, communities of colors, the poor working whites in our community, and that's why I'm running for city council. We're at a transformative time, where we need a transformative leader, who will go to the mat for the entire ward, not just for a group of people. So that's why I'm, why I'm running for city council, I love getting first choice, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mark Warding.
Thank you for coming out tonight, the weather isn't as good as it was. It's exciting to see this, excuse me, this many people here. My name is Mark Warding. I grew up in St. Paul, lived here all my life, school here at Hamlin University. Bought our first house in Rockhampton, that was a lot of very pretty system. In that time, I served on District 79 Council, District 80 Council, Ramsey Hill Association. I worked for one of the city council members for over 10 years, that's what this made me, then I worked for Janice Radman, the county commissioner, as an aide. So I represent, worked for people who represent this district for over 25 years. I got started in this business in two ways. First one, sewer backups. We might remember, then it rained, our sewers backed up, we went to the city, the city said we don't have the line. We had three 100-year storms in one summer. Three major floods, there were people swimming in the streets, and in quarters, there was so. So we finally got, we worked together as a community to get the sewers, we took all of the CIB, all of the capital improvement dollars, for several years, and the other districts, the other parts of the city were not happy about that. That's what got me into this business. I will find creative solutions to problems, and running to represent all of the people in this district, some of them, and to make sure that everybody grows and succeeds. I will tell you that, we talk about light rail, but you can see out here, I was on the first committee to design light rail transit for University Avenue, that was in 1983. So that's all on you there.
Thank you. Johnny Howard.
Good evening. St. Paul is a great city, that could be even better, in particular Ward 1. I started from a rock some 30 years ago, while doing an internship with former council president Bill Wilson. I went on and took my first walk down Sherburne Avenue with former chief Bill McCutcheon. Bill Corky Fiddy, your other chief, continued that walk with me. Governor Orrin Carlson announced his crime package from my desk. Your former chief John Harrington joined that walk and walked with me through the neighborhood. Your current sheriff and your current police chief continued walking with me. I know public safety, I know what it means to do community policing, I know what it means to have a neighborhood you can feel comfortable in. I have worked on the city's business review council. I pledged them to make St. Paul a friendlier place to do business. I served on the University Avenue Business Association, I created a small business, I know and understand business. I served on the city's community development housing task force. I helped create the Greater Frogtown Community Development Corporation. I served on the rural affordable housing committee, and I've worked on the Sherburne Initiative. I understand housing, I understand how to get housing done in our neighborhood. I've created programs for seniors, I've worked directly with our seniors, and I've created programs for our young people. I'm not a community organizer, I'm a neighborhood organizer. I've worked with every community within this neighborhood, trying to make a difference. Throughout tonight, and in my literature, I'm going to talk about the things I've done in the past. Throughout tonight, and over the next 22 days, I want to show you how it's relevant today and over the next 10 years, where I want you to vote for number one, to continue the movement to make St. Paul, to make Ward 1 the best neighborhood in the city.
Thank you. Candidate Paul Tomcrin has been invited and is absent. Should he attend, he will be included in the round of questioning as well as closing statements. For those viewers, for example, who are not familiar with Ward 1, I could refer you to the green in the middle, because some of the candidates like to talk about it being the heart of St. Paul. So you've got Summit Avenue on the south, up towards Pierce Butler, you've got on the north, Pierce Butler, I'm sorry, Summit Avenue on the south, Pierce Butler towards the north, and then you've got Rice Street on the east side, the university, and then 935E. And on the west, you've got Smelling Avenue from Summit to University Avenue, then east to Lexington. So that's Ward 1, these are the candidates running for that particular ward. I'm going to start with the questioning. Again, we have a one-minute response, and we're going to start with Debbie. We're going in, out, heading toward her from here. The first question, rather long, I will repeat it if needed, for any of you. How have foreclosures and lending disparities impacted your own family, neighborhood, or community? And how will your personal experiences and understanding of lending disparities affect how you will relate to constituents and banks? Hold it, hold it. I think I'll repeat that, if you'd like me to. How have foreclosures and lending disparities impacted your own family, neighborhood, or community? And how will your personal experiences and understanding of lending disparities affect how you will relate to constituents and banks?
Thank you. Ward 1, as most of you know, has been hit heavily with foreclosures. And part of the issue, I've got neighbors that have lived across the street from me, who actually lost their house through the foreclosure. And a lot of these were senior citizens who got tied up in those loans, where they went in and hooked up the loans for. So, I understand the issues, they have came, they've talked to me, trying to go back and trying to get refinancing, trying to get their credit so that they're able to get their houses back on board. Those are things that are really hard, and those are the things that we've got to work on to improve, how we can do refinancing and the ability to get votes where they can get back into a house and to get shelter for them and their families.
Thank you. Noel.
So, foreclosure crisis is why I left the private sector. Not only did I witness, you know, families coming in who wanted to rent apartments, but some very dear friends of mine who actually live in the north end, they were so excited to buy their first house and start their family, and now they have two kids, and they had an 80/20 mortgage, right, that was interest healthy, and thought it was a good deal, and they came within inches of losing their home. It was only through the grace of a mutual friend of ours, who actually refinanced their house, that they were able to keep it. That's not free. You shouldn't have to ask a friend for a personal loan to continue to live in your own house. And so that's some of the work that I've been doing in the Ward 1 office. One of the things that I've worked on with council member Carter, is an initiative where we put together a foreclosure buyback program. So I did the research, found where there was a similar program in Boston, that's helped over 150 families sell their house on a short sale, and then buy it back at a lower price, and thereby lower their, their payment, right? So, we put together something similar, we worked with community nonprofits, with the Planning Economic Development Department, and put together a similar program that's been launched, and that's the type of things that we'll continue to do.
Thank you. Dao Kai.
Dai Kao.
Dai Kao, sorry.
So, this is really embarrassing, but I myself have been a foreclosure, I lost my home. I know what it's like to, the powerlessness that you have as a family to go through that experience. Currently, my mother-in-law is fighting for foreclosure, and I can tell you that it impacted me and it impacted my kids. So, with this experience, you can ensure that as CEO of city council personnel, I'll fight hard for you. Noel and I also believe in the same program that is being exercised in Boston. We also know that right now, foreclosure is the biggest destruction in our community. Each time this foreclosure goes up, crime goes up, and property tax goes up for other parts of our community. And so I'll work with you, I'll work with our existing partnership, I went down to Capitol with Isaiah, and also Jewish Action Community, fighting for the homeowner builder rights, and you'll, you'll see that, I'll continue to work with you, and we'll work together to solve this.
Thank you. Mark Warding.
I don't think there's anybody here that hasn't, that hasn't been affected, or hasn't known something to that, with foreclosure. Foreclosure is a national problem, not a city one. Changes to that system have to come together. However, I believe the city, the city council, I believe could have stepped in and joined a number, any number of lawsuits against some of the banks to try to stop foreclosures and force the banks to initiate new activities to help people stay in their homes. That didn't happen, and so this is where we end up. My goal from this point forward is to make sure that people are able to stay in their homes, not just through banking foreclosures, but also that we have funds to help people put a roof on, refurbish them, fix a sidewalk, fix the steps, low-interest loans, low-interest loans, and preserve our houses, rather than losing it, because when they go into foreclosure, the city ends up with it, and the city cares for them all.
Thank you. Johnny Howard.
An injury to one is an injury to all. That's how it impacts all of us. If your neighbor loses his home, you're losing property there. An injury to one is an injury to all. Our community development corporations, we need to join those boards and create better housing opportunities and better housing programs. We've got to look at contractor deed programs, to get those people to get questionable credit to help them on contractors, on contractor deeds. We need to look at land trust programs. We can't go back, we've got to move forward. So how do we take these empty houses and turn them back into homes? We join the boards of our neighborhood housing groups, and together, we create programs that's going to help all of our neighbors get back on their feet. We're fine to go back to Ward 1. That's, that's.
Thank you. Paul Tomcrin.
Thank you. I think I really couldn't hear you. Okay, projecting. Foreclosure and lending, very important issue. I think some of my candidate colleagues here have talked about it. What I think, what I can share with you is that I think it's important for us to gather our resources. There are many, many of us in here, we know these resources. As someone who's been building about, building resources, I think it's important for us to sort of come together and to talk about these issues that we were talking about, foreclosure and lending. What resources, what people go out there, we know, you know, many of us know about these resources. But what I've seen is that many of the time, we don't share these resources with other people, and the families are impacted by that. We need to step up as a community member to say, you know what, we will not tolerate that, because the one that hurts the most is in our community, because many of the time, we don't have those resources, we don't have that kind of support. And I would love to have a friend that will bail me out, but I don't have that friend today. Let you and I be that friend.
Thank you. The second question would be directed first to Dao Kai.
Scott.
Oh, I stopped. Noel Nix, I'm sorry. What is your plan to create jobs and grow small business in Ward 1?
So, this is one of the areas that I think is most critical, and that I'm most passionate about with Ward 1 and our future. So we have a very narrow window where there's going to be a lot of development interests, City Avenue, Smelling Avenue, Selby Avenue, and so, in response to that, to ensure that we have community voice and small businesses continue to flourish on those critical commercial corridors, I've been working with the Selby Avenue Action Coalition, Michael Wright, who many of you know, who owns Michael Wright, who many of you know, who owns Golden Time Coffee, has convened that group. I've been working with Nadia Presley, Community Neighborhood Development Center, as well as Vamnang Taj over at AIDA, the Asian Economic Development Association, so that the city is supporting grassroots-led efforts to support small business growth. So I see Peter Leggett in the room. He's a part of the Selby Avenue Action Coalition. We're just starting fundraising to start adding staff to the city to work with the void that Selby Avenue Community Development Corporation has left to work with our small businesses, to find development opportunities. And we'll do the same on University Avenue and Snelling too.
Thank you. Dae Taeho.
So, you know, job is my number one priority and one of the things I want to do as your city council person is I want to pass a provision that said, company that comes in and develop along Central corridor, they have to offer jobs to this community first. With living wage jobs, some of these jobs has to be unioned with full benefit because we've seen time and time that union jobs, living wage jobs going to lift family out of poverty. It's important that when kids wake up at six, seven in the morning, they see their parents getting ready to go to work, that they see themselves, that that's why they need to go to school, that's why they need to go to work. So job is important in this community, so I'll pass that provision. Right now, I'm currently working with the Carpenters Union, the Operating Engineer, SEIU, and the Returning Citizen, or ex-felon, so that they can find jobs along Central corridor. I'm not just waiting until I get into city council to do these kinds of work. I'm already doing those kinds of work in the community and with your support, we can further this program to ensure that all of us prosper together. I can be more than available to answer your questions later about this program. Thank you.
Mark Burning?
The investment in these several quarters is going to create a lot of new interest, a lot of opportunity for the job. Today, there are very limited dollars, federal dollars to create new initiatives, so the private market is my name, where we have to turn to for jobs. St. Paul Board Authority is very experienced in finding those businesses and living wage jobs, putting them into buildings, putting them in the sites, in the community. Part of the requirements are that those jobs go to people who live in the community. They are living wage jobs. Selby Avenue creates another opportunity for new small businesses. 64% of all new jobs come from small businesses, so that's where we have to focus. One thing we have to keep in mind as people turn to Selby Avenue is that it is not a grand avenue. Grand avenue has created, as commercial district created problems for people who live in the community. And our jobs have to focus on serving people. You already put my name.
Johnny Howard?
We need to create an infrastructure. We need to create a city that's going to attract new businesses. We've got to create a neighborhood that people who are going to open up new businesses, we've got to create a city and a neighborhood that they want to open their businesses up in. We've got to make sure anytime we're utilizing city dollars, that we try to make sure that they guarantee that some of those jobs are going to be for people who live in the city. We've got to do job training. There's no sense in having a new stadium being built, two new stadiums being built and we're not for training and preparing people to get those jobs. Job training, educating people, eight minutes late, eight minutes early is late, okay? Five minutes to eight is late. We've got to do job training to get people ready to go to work. We've got to create an infrastructure. We've got to create a city that people want to open their businesses in. That's what we've got to do. We've got to encourage people to come to St. Paul to go and do their business.
Kazila Khan Taeho?
I'm actually interested in helping you. I've been doing I-D and folks that I've been talking to saying they have the skill set. They want to start a business, but they can't find funding. There's nobody that's willing to invest in it. It's great to attract people to come in, but you know what, they come in, eventually leave. I'm interested in talking to people that are in this community, that are building, wanting to build, and continue to build. I have families and friends down University Avenue. They are in operation, but they are not getting the kind of resources, the kind of support in place. What I would like to do is to make sure that we give them the right support and the right resources. What I have seen is that, we have one model of doing business, you have to evolve it. When you don't have all that stuff, but I have the will, I have the power, I have the energy, and I want to do this, and I want to do this with or without the city, I think this is where we have an opportunity to provide support. Many of the times, it doesn't always have to be money. It's about the right training and the right support. I believe that if we don't, I don't know much, and how many people are willing to come into Ward One. But I believe that there's a lot of people in Ward One that's willing to step up and go in shock, and I want to help you. Debbie Montgomery?
Excuse me. Small businesses are the things that I'm really interested in. MDC is working vitally and on training people so they can run small businesses. But we have more land in Ward One than any other ward right now for the availability to start businesses in this ward. More importantly, we've got the light rail line that has came through and doing the construction of that light rail line, we've lost a lot of businesses. And those people want to come back in and they want to keep their businesses going there. So it is important that we put together and make St. Paul business friendly, which according to the businesses that I've talked to, the zoning issues and the things like that have impacted them on their growth and their expansion. So I want to work with the city so that we can change those zoning issues and make it available and also to provide the opportunity for people to get resources so that they can build a business and also train employees. We have to do that. So that's one of the things I'm working on.
Next question directed to Dae Taeho. How can we stop crime? Houses are being broken into left and right.
Thank you. I think it starts with foreclosure, right? Preventing foreclosure, there's a lot of impact unintended consequences as a result of foreclosure. Foreclosure created, every time there's 2.3%, every time there's a percent of increase in foreclosure, there's a 2.3% of crime and poverty. And so we need interconnecting public policy that connects the jobs to helping families stay in their home, keeping kids stable in their community, in their school. And these are all connecting issues that are related. And so as your city council person, I will work with you as partners, our school, a police officer, making sure that our department is reflective of the people that they serve, that the police officers are from the community, they understand our history, they understand our culture, they all appreciate us and then stereotype us and working with us for a safer community. That's why I've been endorsed by the firefighter, because they know that I will stand up for them to ensure that we get the resources that are promised to the firefighters along Central corridor. Broadtown has the highest mortality rate and so I'm going to work with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Burning?
As I look at the crime reports around the city, there isn't a neighborhood in St. Paul that doesn't experience breakouts and crime, some more than others. The key to stopping the house robberies and street crime is hardly within pipeline duty. In fact, we talked about earlier, finding jobs for people, creating jobs for people, bringing an advantage to the neighborhood. The other piece is enforcement, to make it undesirable for those people to operate in this city. When I worked for Bill Wilson on the city council, we came up with two programs. First was the force program, the force program with the police department, which focuses our resources on, anyway, to flood the area with police officers and go after their homes. Another thing we did was we restarted the beat house program. The resistance hunger from the department was unattainable and that's helped significantly to reduce the crime, particularly at that time on Selby Avenue.
Thank you. Johnny Howard?
I think jobs, I think employing people is unaddressable, a certain level of crime. Crime in your neighborhood, neighbors knowing neighbors. Neighbors sitting on your front porch, neighbors taking walks, being visible, visibility to stop crime. Neighbors taking ownership of your geographic part of this city. Neighbors knowing neighbors, neighbors being visible, sitting on your front porch, sweeping people as they walk down the street. We've got to take ownership of our neighborhoods. We've got to take ownership of our blocks. We have 596 homeowners. We have to be the eyes and ears for the police department. If there's something wrong going on in your block, it's your responsibility to call it in. That's how you do crime prevention. We have to be the eyes and ears for the police department.
Thank you. Kazila Khan Taeho?
I'm about relationship. Because I think it's important to know your neighbor, as Johnny said. I think it's really important to do that. But it's also important to make sure that we have, as from the city council point of view, I think the opportunity how we can interact with this thesis, making sure that our rec centers are open and keeping our young people occupied. Making sure that we have activities for families and friends. But I think that's important, because when we are employed, when there's livable wages, when we have an opportunity to do that, we are able to live in these homes, these homes that we're talking about, and we can address also the absentee landlord. I think we need to also make sure that we also go after them. Because I think it's important, because that's going to be, that's going to help us to, as in our community, we can address some of those crime rates. And it's not about the police, because I think it's important, we don't need more cops on the street. I think what we need to do is engage more of our community. When you know your neighbor, when you care enough and you are supporting, I think that's where the crime is going to go down. We would not tolerate that.
Debbie Montgomery?
It starts at home. We have to get our people, our young people, so that they have respect each other and that we know our neighbors. That's where it starts. It starts with knowing your neighbor, being able to talk to your neighbor, to identify what issues are going on. People are under a lot of pressure and helping them to get through that helps them so that they can deal with the crime issue. We have to engage our young people with nonprofits that are working along with the police, so that we can go ahead and get kids and young people engaged. The other piece is, it's mainly jobs. I mean, the thing to deal with jobs right now, unemployment causes people to do things that cause crime. So we have to give people more jobs and get them trained and put them out and into the community so that they can work together.
Noel next?
So, community safety takes a multi-pronged approach. One, you have to have an effective police force. And so we do have one of the best police forces in the United States here in St. Paul. But if you look at the demographic trends that are, in terms of what's going to happen with our population, we need to ensure that we have a culturally competent police force and we have a diverse police force, so that our police force can build trust within the Korean community, the Mung community, the African-American community, the Vietnamese community, and understand the cultural context that they're walking into in each and every situation. And that's how you get the information that you need to solve crimes, by building trust with the community. We also have to make sure that there's opportunities for youth to be involved and engaged, as has already been said. If there's not opportunities for our youth to get out of trouble or to stay away from trouble, we know that trouble is going to find them. And so we do have to make sure that we turn in the conversation in terms of our rec centers and their openness and availability. And then finally, we have to make sure that our neighborhoods are feeling it in terms of investing in our housing and making sure that we don't have a broken window that says that it's okay to break into the car that's in front of the house.
Thank you. Next question, Mark Burning? How will you increase diversity on our police and fire department?
The best single way to increase diversity is to recruit, setting up programs to get young people interested in those jobs, get them educated in those fields, and prepare them for that kind of work. When I first started in this business, you got a job with the police and fire department because you knew somebody in it. That's not the rules today. Education is the rule. And then from there, we need to reach out to communities of color and identify people in those communities who may be interested in really working with those programs.
Thank you. Johnny Howard?
I've signed on the board to hire St. Paul police officers. I help read the resumes. And so one of the things we've got to do is make sure we get involved on that level, read those resumes and really trying to help select people of color that's skilled to do the job. But we can start right in our neighborhoods. We got to let our children, I talked about community policing earlier. We police community relationships. We've got to establish relationships with our children, with the police department. They don't see them as an enemy, as somebody else. One of the things we did in the old days, we had the police referee baseball games. We had the police walk down the street with us with drill troops. They got to see policemen, and it's a good job. They got to see police as part of the neighborhood. So it's establishing relationships. And you, you can't see a police officer and go, Lord. You got to see a police officer and speak to him and let your child see you speaking to him. It's a relationship that you have with your child, with that police officer in front of your child.
Kazila Khan Taeho?
I've been working on human resources workforce development for many years. And what I've seen how we can continue to, how we can increase diversity is that we need to start talking, we start working with our young people. And then I think the next piece is, I think before we start recruiting, what are we doing internally? Because if we have a model, this is how we do it, and if I'm going to recruit a person of color in, I just need a token person. We don't need a token. We want to be able to build internally, I think before you start your recruitment, I think you need to go inside and say, where do you stand? What do you know about this community? Because if you don't, you do internal out, you can recruit all you want, because what I have personally seen is that people of color will come in. If you fit the model, you start, for the community, you're not actually the, that you're the community, you become the other person. So I think it's important for us to make sure that the community, the police department actually really gets cultural competency and move beyond cultural competency, cultural intelligence, that this is not the enemy, that we need to work with them. And when you do this, you can recruit, because you're going to recruit people in. You're not going to try to transform someone else to look like you. We're working with them and safety is all of us.
Thank you. Debbie Montgomery?
Well, first of all, we have to make sure that we have programs to get our young people from all of these diverse cultures to understand how government works, how policing works. And the key thing about that is, I'll use an example, St. Paul YWCA holds a junior police academy, and we have multicultural kids that are in there and they get to go through the process to see the different things, how the police department works and how do they engage. So it breaks down barriers, they relate to the police, they get to understand them. I teach at a community college. One of the biggest things is, we don't get a lot of people, because young people don't know about the policing entity, I don't see a lot of them in the colleges, which is what they have to have to get a degree so they can become police. So we have to start young, get them involved with it and then get them so that they can get into college and get their certificates. More importantly, how do we diversify in our city? I think we need to look at probably giving 10 points for residency to get folks jobs that live in the city and know these communities from the different cultures. So that's my recommendation.
Noel next?
So as has already been said, it does begin with relationships and creating spaces where there can be positive interactions with police officers and firefighters and our kids. Todd Axel, who's the new assistant chief, did a brilliant thing, like you said, at the Western District, and held an open house and Palau cookout right at the Western District and worked with organizers at Skyline Tower and had kids interacting with the bomb squad and riding on the police motor vehicle, really having that chance to positively interact, interact with the equipment and hopefully spark an interest in that career. We also have to make sure that there are bridge programs to help people get the skills that are needed to become members of the firefighters or the police force. So expanding programs like the EMS Academy, which was started several years ago, and I've had the honor of working on while in the Ward One office, to give the hard skills that are needed to our communities of color so that they can get the training that they need to go on to join the force.
Thank you. Dae Taeho?
Can you state a question?
Absolutely. How will you increase diversity on our police and fire department?
So, you know, I've been in a conversation with Dave Titus, who's the president of the Police Federation, and Chris Parsons over at the firefighter, and we've been having continuing conversation about how do we recruit more diversity into the force. And one of those things that we, the criteria that we like to see is that the workforce has to come, the men and women have to come from the community and that they see their jobs more than just a job, that it's actually an investment in the community. And so they understand the people that they're working with. And so, you know, I don't have to wait till I get to city council seat. I'm already working with the firefighter, police department, working with our returning veterans, many women, veterans, to see they're interested in being a firefighter, being in the apprentice program with the Carpenters Union with the firefighter. And they're very interested and they're, you know, we have to appreciate them too because they are some of the hardest working people to keep our community safe and because they are some of the hardest working people to keep our community safe, and I'm really happy that, to have their support, and we'll, we'll work together, and we'll make sure that in the future our force will be like our community.
Thank you. Next question is directed first to Johnny Hummer. What is the largest budget you have managed, and how will you deal with the shortfall upon reaching Ward One?
My nonprofit organization, our budget was about $350,000 a year. The shortfall in Ward One, we got to try to, hopefully we'll never have another one. The budget's set for the next two years. We got to find out and work to try to get that budget back intact. The money taken from Ward One that went to other parts of the city, we just got to work to get it right, to get it back into Ward One. But the largest budget I handled was about $300,000 a year for our nonprofit organization.
Thank you. Azula Khan Chow.
Most recent budget I've managed was $600 million, equivalents to the city. Shortfall, it's not going to get any easier. I think my experience on the school board is that we're not going to, there's just not a pressure to be able to get those money. What we're going to need to do is, what, currently what we have as our headquarter, the budget's already set. With resources that we currently have, what I'm going to do with them, and we need to make sure, and we start to prioritize, we need to start looking what's important to us and then how to, I think that's going to be the most important thesis. But if you're realistically thinking, "Oh, we're going to get all that money," it's not going to happen. It didn't happen quite. What we need to continue to do is to say, as the school board, what is our priority? What is feasible? How do we make that happen? And then look at additional resources.
Debbie Montgomery.
The city, having been on the city council and worked for their city budget, I've dealt with that budget. I also, as the assistant commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, I oversaw the public safety budget for the state of Minnesota, and that took care of the state patrol, the BCA, traffic safety and all of that. So, I've managed several different budgets, large budgets at state and city level, so that we can see how we can take those, our services. I think one of the things about the city budget is that we really have to look at and do an evaluation. The city's done an assessment of both the police and the fire department, which are the two biggest takers in, in the city budget. Well, we need to analyze what's going on within the other departments to find out which of those, what items in those budgets are working and which ones aren't, and then retooling those programs so that we can either take those employees and those programs and make them so that they meet the needs of what the citizens want of the city right now.
Thank you. No one next?
So, for the past two years, I've had the honor of serving two different council members and advising them on the $600 million city budget. And in terms of making sure that we're getting resources for Ward One, it's going to take a council member who's going to stand up and demand that Ward One gets its fair share of resources. Recently, the mayor's office, you probably have read about this in the Pioneer Press with the Sarge Everton, the mayor's office proposed cutting $111,000 in funding to our district councils, as well as some of our non-district council community organizations. I worked with the mayor's office and said, "Now is not the time to cut investment when we're opening the light rail in our community organizations that reach out to residents and make sure that they have a voice in what happens in our community." So, we're going to have a resolution that's going to come forward shortly, where we're going to hold the line on that funding into the next year. And we're going to have to make sure that the council office is building partnerships with foundations, with philanthropic community to bring in outside resources, and leveraging the resources that we do have within the city with those philanthropic funds to support our nonprofits as well. If you've done that, and I'll continue to do that.
Guy Chow.
So, being an IT manager and working IT professional field for the last 14 years, I've had the privilege to support Sage Software, it's one of the biggest accounting software in the world, they have 40 million customers. I have dealt with running a remodeling project in my department, million dollar budget. I ran the mayor's budget cover to cover. I, right now, it's structurally sound, but I think we need to figure out what's going to happen the next 10, 20 years. What if we, we stop getting our LGA fund? What if, and then, one of the things that I saw that we need to look at from the budget is that 30% of our institution in St. Paul doesn't pay property taxes. So, as a city council person, I'm willing to have that conversation, the top conversation of, you know, how do we help property tax, how do we help alleviate property taxes that not all, not all the burden goes to the homeowner, but our institution, our university. I know they do a great job in our community, but can they help us for a couple of years until we can recover, until we can put family back in their homes if they, if they consume more closure?
Thank you. Mark Burning.
I just finished reviewing and making recommendations on the rent county budget of, it's about $550 million and another $180 million for the regional rail authority, most of which, or some of it, quite a bit of which is actually directly from property taxes. When you pay a property tax bill, for every dollar you pay in, the city gets 24 cents, the county gets 33, 35 cents, and the school district gets 34 cents. So, we're already dealing with a small amount of property taxes. Dealing, the key to dealing with the city budget, our county budget is to make certain, elected officials need to make certain, the staff is doing the job that they have been charged to do, and that with the budget that they've been given. And this, the other part is to make sure that they are also providing the services that you are paying for.
Thank you. Next question is directed to Azua. It's a two-part concerning light rail. First is foul noise be addressed? The second is a safety issue. Construction has narrow traffic lanes, no bike lanes exist. Can pedestrians and bicycles coexist on the sidewalks of St. Paul?
So, first, please, do you want the noise?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, that's, that's a very good question. I think what I've seen, what I've actually seen in some of the construction that I've actually done on some of the streets, I think it's important for us to look at, I never believe in, in looking at some of the practices, what actually will help in to decrease some of the noise level. I've, I've seen some freeways and what they actually built has built in those, so I don't know what it helps, the panels, but I think with the light rail, I think it's going to be very interesting. I'm interested in looking into what opportunity, what resources, how to decrease those noises. At this point, I can't tell you, I'd be very honest with you, I don't know how much noise that that's going to create, but I look forward to, when, when the light rail do come into town, is to, to look at what resources, because we can't build up any, any, any walls against that. How do we look at that? So, I don't have an answer, but I look forward to getting an answer for that. Safety, yes, we can coexist. I think it's real important because we have a light rail, like it's important for us, and it has caused, it has caused, as someone who's lived in this area for a long time, it's been very difficult. But I think that it's important for us to make sure that we have pedestrians, have an opportunity, because otherwise, the shop that, that the shop that are headed in need to be able to have people accessible.
Debbie Montgomery.
Well, having went to numerous meetings on this light rail, they claim the noise isn't going to be loud, so, that's what they say. I don't, I won't be telling you what they say. But, the interesting thing about this noise piece is, I don't know that a lot of planning has been done. A lot of you may know, we probably got one of the largest hearing impaired communities in the city, because St. Paul College has the largest group of students hearing impaired. And, there's nothing that had been put up that I see or have been told about, the lighting for the people, the hearing impaired even cross. So, that's going to be a whole different issue that I don't think it's been addressed. The other thing is, is can bicycles and people coexist? You've got the Charles Avenue bike route that's being developed, you've got the north-south routes coming across the freeway at Griggs, at Chatsworth, where they've got a combination of the bikes and, and the pedestrians. So, we're putting together systems where we can walk and commute together with both bikes and, and people.
Thank you. No one next?
So, with the noise issue, we probably won't know until the trains are actually running, but I say that the Met Council can find extra money to build tunnels in Minneapolis, and light rail unfettered and unpolluted so people can enjoy it, the Met Council can find extra money, but there's going to be noise from the trains. And I will stand up and talk to Sue Hay and make sure that she finds those resources if it's an issue. Also, with, with bicycling on University Avenue, we do have a really just weird configuration on University Avenue right now. And so, a few things that we're working on. One, I've already been working with the Workforce Office to start to get resources, to have a community conversation about pedestrian realm on University Avenue. Do we need to add that parking to support our business? Do we need to do things to make sure that people can cross safely? And then, secondly, I've been working to help implement the bike lock action plan that the city passed several years ago, to ensure that there's parallel paths, north and south, east and west, to bicycle around the central corridor. And so, I've worked with Shane and Mary Perry, who I see back there, and had some of those conversations about how do we make sure that there's bicycle infrastructure that fits within the character and the nature of our communities, and I'll continue to be that champion of the city council.
Guy Chow.
So, I tell you that, well, my conversation was completely frustrating, and look, let's be, let's be honest, Met Council, they dropped the ball, right? They could have done more to help the small businesses, they could have done more to protect our parking space, they could have done more to ensure that there's better lighting and that there's bike trail along the corridor. And so, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to, I want to work with our partners and drive our bargain to ensure that Met Council continue to live up to expectation of bringing back better parking, making sure that we have bike track, making sure that we have better lighting so that our community can actually feel safe when they use the light rail for the, for the noise. I think that it's a constant evaluation, if this is a trial error that comes to our central, come to our neighborhood, we got to go back to the evaluation process, process to make sure that it works for everybody. Now, one important thing is that I want to fight to make sure that Station 18, we have another paramedic, because we know that there's a fatality, average of one fatality along Hiwata every year. Can you imagine the kind of activity that we have along Central, Central Border? So, we got to make sure that Central Border work well, so that we have the right resource to keep our safe, we're working with the.
Mark Burning.
In regard to the device in the light rail system, it is what it is, it's what it's going to be. If there are opportunities to dampen the whistles, the bells, put down new materials on the tracks, we need to explore that. Biggest thing is to have well-maintained vehicles. As soon as it starts running off, that's one of the things. And as far as safety, I think bicycles and pedestrians can be accommodated on the other sidewalks. Cyclists who are traveling through the community, not using the businesses, should be on, of instance, Charles Street, Charles Avenue, light rail.
Thank you. Johnny Hummer.
Well, the noise that's going to be is here. You know, we're going to have to look at trees and hedges. We've got to try and buffers between, you know, so much could be happening in our alleys right now, that all our deliveries are up in alleys, but we've got to try and, we've got to try and buffers. We're going to look at trees and hedges that go along those alleys along Sherwood and Aurora. And, and as Mark said, as the vehicles get older, we're going to have to make sure they're repaired sooner. But, it's here. Too bad we didn't think about this before we broke ground, but the noise is here. On the safety, one thing that you guys may not know, when you're crossing the street, that, you know, the walk, don't walk signs, they're not designed for you to cross the street, they're designed for you to get to the middle. We need to look at those walk, don't walk signs and make sure we give our seniors, our mothers with strollers, and, and people like myself a little bit more time to cross the street. So, we're, we're going to need to, but we're going to need to really look at the time we get to cross.
Thank you. This is the last question today, directed to Debbie Montgomery. What is your position on Promise Neighborhood?
What is my position? I, I support any program that is going to get our young people so that we can close the achievement gap. If Promise Neighborhood can do that, along with the resources that they have with it, I think that that's a wonderful program. I don't have just one program. I mean, the Promise Neighborhood includes trying to bring families in, parents in, the students in, to try to get them so that they can close that achievement gap. So, I, I think that it, along with other programs that can supplement that, are the things we need. It's not just one program. One program isn't going to solve the achievement gap in this area, in this city. And so, it's how do you put all of those programs together so that we can close the achievement gap, get our students up to speed, so that we can get qualified, certified people that are going to be able to do the jobs that we've been talking about all evening tonight, about the small businesses. We need to train people to be able to do that, and Promise Neighborhood is just one of several programs that we can do.
No one yet?
So, Promise Neighborhood is a fantastic program, and we haven't been doing a good job of telling the community what's been happening, what's happening with it. More importantly, we haven't been incorporating community voice into the way that it's rolled out. And so, my position is, is that we need to find ways to bring back community voice and input and talk more about the incredible work that we're doing. We have hundreds of kids who've received early childhood scholarships to attend three- and four-star parent-aware rated early childhood care centers, and start to learn early so that they can be on the right trajectory. We've had hundreds of kids attend Freedom School during the summer and keep reading and get character development, so they don't experience summer reading loss and learning loss. We've had hundreds of kids start to connect with in-school navigators so that their families can connect, can connect with the resources that they need to prevent, to prevent them from concentrating on their education. And Munir Cartre Ramos, who's our Promise Neighborhood's director, is here tonight, and I encourage you to get to know him. He's an incredible leader who has an incredible commitment to bringing community voice and continuing to ensure that we're aligning our investments in closing the achievement gap.
Guy Chow.
Well, I think the Promise Neighborhood is a good program in theory, and I think that we can do better, right? I think we could, part of the Promise Neighborhood, it needs interconnecting policies, such as it needs to be connected to a good progressive job policy, so that parents have lightweight jobs so they can put food at the table, so they can send their kids to school not on an empty stomach. And we need to make sure that when kids are done with school, they have jobs, to go to do, because otherwise, kids, some of these kids end up in a criminal justice system, and then we end up paying the tax on it, and it's, you know, $500,000 to keep them alive in the prison system. I think it's better to invest in our community to ensure that they have good school, they have good jobs, so they contribute back into the tax base and to, contributing to our community. And so, that's one of the good things that I do, is I'm a community organizer, and I know how to build relationships, I know how to bring different communities, different culture, different race, different generation together, to solve problems together. That's what I also do as IT manager, is really good at solving problems, and good at making sure that our system is efficient and innovative, and so, I look forward to working with all of you, so, thank you.
Mark Burning.
The Promise Neighborhood program is one of several that we need to complement to help students to close that achievement gap, and also to impact their lives. The problem, it has great potential, it needs federal funding to be successful. The problem I have further from the community is that the community has some people who live in the neighborhood, people who have kids in the schools that have really been completely left out of the process. So, reconnect them, bring them into the system, listen to what they're saying, listen to what they're saying, and then hook them together, and then let them develop.
My Promise Neighborhood is going to be now in Pedro, in summer, every child in New York is supporting it, every school in New York is supporting it. The achievement gap, I want to talk about the opportunity gap. Mom and dad need good paying jobs. If you get off work and not have to go back to work, you can go to the rec center and volunteer, you can spend time to lead to your child, you can spend time to sit and listen to your child, you can address housing, decent affordable housing. It's an opportunity gap that the council member should address, and make sure that you got time to spend with your child. Now, if you're going to school or getting your little boy, go visit a teacher, mom and dad, you got the time, you got the money, spend time with your child.
Azula Khan Chow.
I was on the board when Promise Neighborhood came around. I was something that would be interesting, and I said, "Of course, yes." Promise Neighborhood, I think the word itself is great, it helps promise, it's what we promise, but I have to be able to deliver. So, for me, it's about relationships, it's about collaboration, it's about accountability. If we have partners, we cannot do this alone. If the city council thinks that they can medicate, if the school board thinks that they can only do that, I think it takes all of them, and both local, state, and national. I don't just fight for one resource. I think all of us need to come together and say, "If we're going to promise, what are we actually promise? If we make a promise, will we deliver?" For me, when we talk about neighborhood, I live in this area, I have niece and nephew, I promised Promise Neighborhood, but there was no connection. And so, when we really say we want this Promise Neighborhood, who are the people that are running the program? Who are the people that are actually doing the others? Are they from the community? Do they care about the community? Do they need to come in and tell you what to do? But it's, I think it's a little harder when you're actually living in the community.
Thank you. Two next opposing statements will begin with, no one yet?
Thank you again, everyone, for being. Thank you again, everyone, for being here tonight, and I hope you've enjoyed the conversation we've had about the future of our community. And hopefully, you've had an opportunity to see some of the differences and some of the similarities between the different candidates. And hopefully, you've heard and listened for specific things about what your next city council member is going to do, or the candidates who want to be your next city council member, are going to do to ensure that our ward and our city continue to move forward. In order to be a good city council member, you need to be prepared, you need to have good plans that are informed by the community, and you need to have the right partnerships in order to bring those plans to fruition. And so, I'm proud to say that I have the support of folks like Asmi, who represent the men and women who really run our city and make sure that we're providing the best possible city services. I've had the opportunity to work with those folks every single day and understand that they're hardworking, and they need city leaders who understand the stress and the strain that they're under, to perform to the best of their ability for you. I have the support of folks like Teamsters, who represent our recycling truck drivers, and the Regional Labor Federation, which represents hardworking men and women throughout St. Paul. I also have the support of the St. Paul Area Chamber of Commerce, because we have to bring all voices together, labor, business, residents, to find creative solutions that are going to help us move our community forward. And so, finally, I'm really excited because we're a really exciting grassroots campaign. The folks who've worked on the Obama campaign, my wife included, are involved in this campaign and helping us reach voters across the ward. And we've built an exciting team that's truly reflective of the diversity that we have in our community. And I'm also proud to have the endorsement of the Minnesota Young DFL Caucus. Those are the college students and young people who are really excited about the future of our community, and in some ways, we're really trying to build for and leave a legacy for as we continue to do our work in our community and look towards the future. So, again, I ask for your first choice vote, so that we can continue the momentum and continue to move work on forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been organizing in St. Paul since 2001. I'm an organizer, take action, that sort of, and Isaiah, faith-based organizing. And through that experience, I learned that even though we come from different histories, our destiny is linked in one and one, our lives are interconnected. And then, in order for my three children to have a good life, I need to ensure that you and your kids have a good life. And these are the kind of values that I'm going to bring at the City Hall. So, we need, we're at a transformative time, but we need more than a policy person, we need a leader who will unite, who has the audacity and the determination to unite our community, because our diversity is our strength in this community. But for too long, our difference has been divided, and we've been used to go against each other, to fight for the scrap, while they detour prosperity to other communities. It's like we continue to make a big pizza, but when the pizza is all sliced, we don't get our piece, we don't get our slice. And so, I'll be your city council person, I'm going to be ready, go to the mat for you, I'll fight hard for you, I'll invest in your life, in your quality of life. When you call, I'll pick up the phone and get to work on the thing that's important to your quality of life. Even though we may not agree on different things, but just because we have differences, it doesn't mean that what you have to say is important. And so, that's the kind of responsive leadership that I'll bring to City Hall. It is time, the time is now, and I want you to stand with me, vote for me in your first choice in November. Thank you so much.
Again, please hold your applause to the end. Mark Burden.
Strength in this community, the strength in this ward, it really lies in the people in the neighborhood. We are a mix of races, a mix of religions, a mix of incomes, a mix of agents, a mix of different nation borders, and yet we all get together, get along. We live here because we want to, we want to be a part of this, we want to be a part of this, we all just want to share that here, in this community. City government, actually in all of the city government, the real principle is two-way communication, how does the city work for you? One of the ways we do that is the district council system. And it's my goal to strengthen, not lose, the district council system. Years ago, when the district council said, this is what we want in our neighborhood, the city council generally approved it. Now, our neighborhoods are being, and University Avenue is being planned by people who do not even live here, do not own our communities. We need to take that, take back that control, decide for ourselves, decide block by block what the neighborhood is doing. The impacts on light rail, once it's up and running, is going to be, create some serious problems, parking problems, people are going to park in your neighborhoods, people are going to park in the alleys and on your streets, and you may not be able to park in front of your house. You need to be able to address those issues, but it's my goal to listen to you, to work with you, to address those problems, not be downtown driven like we've been experiencing for the last 20 years.
Johnny Howard.
Thanks, Mark. Mark and I have been in several meetings together where I had this thing, I just want to say that Mark said. When George Lambert put the district council system together, St. Paul's district came to the district councils. Citizen participation was St. Paul's build on. There's no way one council member can lift this large Ward One and get the job done. We've got to rebuild and strengthen our district council system. And remember this, your council person works for you. If you're on the board of that district council, you send the instructions downtown, they shouldn't come down to you. We do have to change that, we have to rebuild our district council system. I said earlier that I wanted to make sure that the things I talked about, my past, and the things I'm talking about, it's all been about good leaders, listen, good leaders listen, then act, listen to you, and then act. Your issues, your concerns, is what good leaders listen to, and that's how we get things done. Block by block, house by house, we can make this a better place to live. For our children, it's going to be you joining our neighborhood board, not a lot of time, but if you don't say what you like about a block by, if you don't say what you like about your neighborhood, it's never going to change. We just talked about light rail, we weren't at the table. If we were at the table, we'd have a parking plan right now. We weren't at the table. We'd have addressed the noise then, we got to do a better job of getting to the table, we got to rebuild our neighborhood group. That's the type of work I do. Partnerships and collaborations, for 19 years from our grandma organization, that's how we got it done. We can do it again, we can make St. Paul a better place, for you and for the children. Thanks for being here tonight.
Kasuma Tonto.
Thank you also for being here tonight. I think you're looking for a city council, you don't need a city council that goes in and don't know what they're doing. You need a city council that actually has proven leadership skills, who's competent, who can manage the city budget right now. As you know, the city has a budget, they're not going to go in, they're not going to go and create a new budget. They actually have to be able to, if they get elected, get where, they need to currently work on the job. So, you need someone that actually have that kind of experience. You also need a council member that knows board governance. It's easy to be on the street and be able to say, you know, I have a grandiose plan, but you know what, when you get to the board, you're going to have to work with the city council member, you have to work with the mayor, you have to work with the city folks, you have to work with the state folks, the federal folks. Where's your relationship? Where's your collaboration? It's going to be really, really important, because we have all these issues that we have been talking about tonight. If you're going to bring that to the city council, you don't just go in and say, one individual, this and that, it's not going to happen. You have to be able to negotiate, you have to be able to make sure that your voice, you have to be able to give and take, that's going to be very critical. So, with that said, I am asking for your vote, your number one vote, because I have the proven experience, the ability, and I believe that I can do the work for you. Thank you.
Debbie McHale.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming. It's been my honor to have served this ward as the council member for four years, and I was able to work with my fellow council members, with the mayor, and with the district councils to get things done. I don't want to talk about the past, but you need to know. The business community is the heart of what's going to happen, to get us the jobs and the opportunities that we need in this ward. And as I worked with Target, Super Target, I was able to get them to that new building that's out there, we've got the only Super Target that has windows, yeah, I'm sorry, the windows on the side. But I say that only because we brought in 1,350 new jobs, 300 of them were at the Super Target, and they all came from Ward One. I also was able to bring in the number one Leeds building, that Wilder Building that's there, was the only five-star Leeds building in the city of St. Paul, and I was able to work with them and the green people to make sure that we got that there. The other thing is, is to try to bring in the opportunities for mixed income housing, senior housing, our population's getting older, our seniors are asking, I was out today, our seniors are asking for senior housing, assisted living, transitional housing. We're trying to work on that, and I worked to bring the first County Heights to come in. I'm here to work for you, I want to do the things, I have a plan of my profession, I engage, I'm able to build those relationships, I'm able to find resources so that we can get things done. The Jimmy Lee Rad Center that we have, I was able to get the Minnesota Vikings that come in with $200,000 and put the turf down there. So, when we talk about getting things done, building relationships, those are the things that I work on, and I'd like to have your support and be your number one vote. Thank you.
There is never enough time to cover all of the issues in a limited time and setting, but questions that are basically included, making Ward One a cleaner place, youth sports, representing the North End, vacant housing and port closures, city budget, subsidizing businesses, strategies on how we start jobs, jobs, and more jobs. We can now start on that subject. Candidates, we especially thank you for running for our office, being part of our democratic process and participating in this forum. If you haven't registered for vote, or you moved or changed your name, you can go to your polling site on November 5th to register with proper identification. I encourage you to visit the League of Women Voters website, you can do it, it's vote411.org. Again, that's vote411.org, for a list of acceptable identification, candidate information, and location at your polling site. I thank all of the active participants in the audience and the viewers on SPNN, as well as the organizing partners and sponsoring organizations. The League of Women Voters sponsored candidate forum to give you an opportunity to hear directly from the candidates, those issues that are important to hear. I should mention there are three upcoming forums, the St. Paul School Board, this Thursday, October 17th, 7:00 to 8:30 at the Halle Kugra Mark McRae Center, a mayoral forum on Thursday, October 24th, again, 7:00 to 8:30 at the School District Central Office on 360, October 3rd, on October 29th, Tuesday, again, the group here from the City Council Board on Nance at the Wilder Center, again, that's Tuesday, October 29th, 6:00 to 8:00 at the Wilder Center, the City Council Board on. If your questions were not addressed, feel free to contact the candidates directly. Remember to vote on Election Day, November 5th, the polls are open 7:00 AM and closed at 8:00 PM. With that, may we have acknowledgement for our candidates.